Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 28, 2019 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I would ask anyone who has any electronic devices that make noise to please silence them. If you have to take a phone call, please exit the chambers and take it in the hallway. If an emergency should arise during the meeting, please exit the chamber in an orderly manner, make a right-hand turn, go to the end of the hall and down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, please make a left-hand turn and then a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. If you need assistance, please ask and it will be provided to you. Please do not use the elevators if there is an emergency. At this time, I'll call on Pastor Court Cropper of Riverside United Methodist Church for our invocation.
This evening, I am reading from First Timothy, the second chapter, the first and second First of all, I urge supplication, prayers, and thanksgiving to be made to all people for leaders and all in high positions, that they may lead in peace, a quiet life, and be defined in every way. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, today we pray for our city leaders. We give them the responsibility to watch over and guide our city that they serve. Lord, lest as you told the prophet Ezekiel, you have made them watchmen for the people of Israel. I pray for city leaders, that they be godly watchmen and watch-women over your creation. I pray that just as you renewed Ezekiel's call as a watchman, I pray that you renew the call to every city leader. We ask this in your son's name, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please rise now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this time we have a presentation.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, friends, guests, thank you and good evening. This evening, I had the honor of being up here to share a proclamation, not out of the ordinary, but I've got the opportunity to talk about some extraordinary people and people that don't often get recognized for the work that they do day in and day out. It's in this room that Saturday, I got to spend with 15 or 16 young ladies, part of the One Year to Empowerment program. It's in this room where earlier this week and last week, I had classes from East Salisbury and Chipmunks and Beaver Run in here, and we got to talk about, and West Salisbury, too, and we got to talk about city government. And you wouldn't be surprised, maybe you would, by some of the comments and questions you get from young people. You know, it goes from, well, one of the most common ones is, you know, "Mayor, did you come here in a limo?" Jim, I'm sure you could speak to that. I'm sure you've gotten this question before. "Do you live in a mansion?" They're always surprised to learn that the mayor makes the least amount of money of all 435 city employees. But ultimately, we're able to get down to simple, fundamental things about, you know, how the city government pays for what it does, who processes that, how a fire gets put out, and who does that work? Who's waiting all day to do that work, to respond to your emergency call? Our police officers and what they do, how that water came out of your faucet clean, where that water goes when it goes down the drain? What are the city officials doing every single day, day in and day out, with our young people or in support of our homeless? So tonight, I get to talk about the fact that Maryland is one of 157 municipalities in this state. Maryland is home to 157 municipalities, including Salisbury. I get to mention the fact that we were incorporated in 1854, but founded in 1732. And municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials, something we can't say usually about our federal or state officials. Maryland cities and towns have celebrated Municipal Government Works Month each November since 1993 in an effort to promote citizens' awareness of and interest in government and their communities. And those same cities and towns have educated over 27,000 students and their teachers about how municipal government works through school visits in their respective communities. Municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents by maintaining natural and historic sites and structures local to their cities and towns, making Maryland a great place to live, work, play, and explore. And it's in an effort to educate our citizens about municipal government and the importance of participation that the city of Salisbury is proud to promote municipal government awareness. And now therefore, I, Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim November 2019 as Municipal Government Works Month in our city. I'm joined by the Maryland Municipal League in promoting awareness and interest of our citizens in the city of Salisbury's local government. And I'm proud that tonight, we have a few of our city employees here with us. I would ask those members of the city of Salisbury government to stand for a moment, please. Back down. Come on. She got it. Yeah, you're included in that, Becca. So 435 people from 15 departments, from the city clerk to city administration, mayor's office, to procurement and fire, and infrastructure and development, communications. We have incredible people that work very hard, that didn't take these jobs to become wealthy or famous, they took these jobs to serve their neighbors and serve their fellow citizens, and to each of you, I say thank you.
May I? You want me to start?
Why don't you start?
Good evening.
Good segue.
Good evening, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, tonight represents a moment of transition, and it's not lost on me that it's there's a lot of things changing right now, or potentially changing. I'm very grateful that we have our very own Kim Nichols in the room tonight.
Yes.
We love you, Kim. You're incredible. We love you. It's also the last time this council will sit as a council. Yep. No meeting next Monday night. And so we're in a period of transition. We've got an election next Tuesday, and there will be change. And each council is unique, right? Each composition of five individuals is unique, and this group has done an incredible job together. We're blessed with each of your service to this city, and we're especially blessed that a man who's given decades in service to this community, decades in different capacities, as an advocate, as a leader, as a councilman, I'm talking about you, twice a councilman, and twice our mayor. Jim, I wrote a letter to you in 2009 that you may or may not remember, and I had just moved back to this city, my hometown, and I said, "If there's anything I can do to help, I'd like to." And you didn't throw it in the trash. You called me and you said, "Yep, I need you to be on the Board of Housing Appeals. Come in here, we're going to point you to this, you're going to get involved."
Now it's hot in here. It was freezing in here five minutes ago.
And I didn't realize that that was, that was not a gift, putting me on the Board of Housing Appeals. I didn't know any better. But Jim, you've taught me a lot. There's so much that we are doing right now that we're only able to do because you started it, and otherwise, it wouldn't be happening. You had to fight a lot of battles along the way, but Salisbury is victorious because of it. I'm grateful to you. Thank you, Jim, for your service. We've got a little something for you.
We have some flowers.
Can we all, can we all get together?
Twelve and eighteen is what I have on my calendar.
Yeah, yeah.
Three weeks from now.
There will be other stuff, too.
Is this why you talked to me like that in the elevator earlier?
Wow, you went all the way back to 1998.
Electoral official first in elementary school.
Well, middle school.
Come over here.
Oh, you're talking to Jay.
No, no, you.
You.
What are you doing?
I'll tell you in a second.
This is being recorded, isn't it?
No, yes.
Yes, it is.
Why are you shaking? Several years ago, quite a few now, I met the mayor when he visited Lower Shore Enterprises. And then subsequently, he asked me if I would chair the longtime stagnant disability advisory board. And I will tell you that of all the city government, there were two people that Lower Shore Enterprise, it was a priority for them. This man is one, and Louise Smith is the other. And it made a big impression on me, and actually, I don't know if you remember, but when I was on that committee, we used to have some discussions in the parking lot. We won't go into the subject matter, but we've become, you've become a good friend of mine, and I appreciate it. You've done a great job, not just as mayor, but as a councilman, and I am forever grateful, and the council is grateful to you. So we, you have a big wall? This is presented to James Irtan Jr. in recognition and appreciation for years of service and dedication to the community and the city of Salisbury as a member of the city council, November 2015 to 2019. Thank you, my friend.
Yeah, now we really got to dig deep, don't we? As I came into town this evening from my parents, the signs are up. Oh, I texted mirrors, mirrors doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
Just professional jealousy, that's all that is. No, no, I never liked a good race that wasn't a fight, so wouldn't have liked it any other way. But I saw Angela's at the corner of Truitt Street, and then a couple others across the street on the property that Council President John Cannon owns from the county council, and it just took me all the way back to 1991, the first time I was asked to step into this And there's far too many stories for this evening between here and there, but the one thing I will remember most about this room, as we have one meeting left instead of two, which I still have on my calendar, upon which I would have been more prepared for this, is after the prayer, every time that we've ever been in here, we stop and we say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I've said the Pledge of Allegiance next to some characters in my day, and I'm sure those people who are sitting next to me would say the same thing, but I've said it from that chair, and I've said it from that chair, only a couple times from that chair, and that chair, and that chair. And I'm amazed with the words, "with liberty and justice for all." I'm just amazed at that, the quiet peacefulness of this room when we say the Pledge of Allegiance through meetings, before meetings that lasted six and a half hours and meetings that have lasted six and a half minutes. We've always started with that same thing. I don't know if I have anything else to say except that I want to thank the citizens of Salisbury for this opportunity over the course of all of these years, all of these years. And thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
He just gave me the dad look. Okay. Let me clear my head. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to remove Resolution Number 2974 and Resolution Number 2975 as an amendment.
Or, no.
Motion to amend.
Oh, yeah.
A motion to amend it.
Is that the right one?
Two, six.
Two, six, nine, seven.
Two, nine, six, seven.
Two, nine, six, seven.
Seven, six, eight.
Sorry. Yeah, that's, yeah, two, nine, six, seven, and two, nine, six, eight, sorry.
Okay, so Resolution Number 2967 and 2968.
Okay, we have a motion to remove Resolution Number 2967 and 2968. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sound like a choir.
No, we'll give it to Mr. Irtan. All right, we'll move on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment removing Resolution Number 2967 and 2968 from the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. We'll now call the motion on to adopt the legislative agenda as amended.
So moved.
Aye.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Blake, can I hear you?
Yes.
Ms. Blake.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Nichols.
On the consent agenda, tonight, we have Resolution Number 2980 approving the appointment of Evan Deckers to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for term ending September 2022. Resolution Number 2981 approving the appointment of Mark Frieden to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for term ending October 2022. And Resolution Number 2982 approving the appointment of David Potts to the Parks and Recreation Committee for term ending November 2022. And that's it.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. Is Evan, Mark, or David here?
John.
We, Mark, please stand. Thank you very much for volunteering and for your service. We appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan.
Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, thank you. Just one item this evening. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process change order number two in the amount of $129,590.70 for invitation to bid ITB 19-120. That's the Newton Street Community Center remodel. This change order provides for revisions to interior remodel specifications at the city's request and exterior building renovations that are required per the Historic District Commission. Upon council's approval of Ordinance 2563 appropriating funds for community centers, which is on tonight's agenda, funding will be available in the community center construction project account as noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to process change order number two, as noted above, to the contractor awarded the original bid, which was Ocean Tower Construction LLC.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. At this time, we are going to have a public hearing on Timbercrest SBY LLC Shoemaker Lane Anyone who wants to speak tonight on this top subject, please rise now and be sworn in by the city clerk.
I'm here representing Timbercrest, so in the event that I need to speak, so.
Fine.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Kim, you have somebody else you want to?
I'm sorry. Do solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2974.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtan. Ms. Clarence, good evening.
Resolution Number 2974, a resolution of the city of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the city of Salisbury of certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the southerly corporate limit of the city of Salisbury to be known as Timbercrest SBY LLC Shoemaker Lane Annexation, beginning for the same at a point on the westerly side on Shoemaker Lane near the northeasterly corner of Lot 1 of the lands of Timbercrest SBY LLC, being part of parcel 0034, Lot 1, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property in a rectangular shape to the point of beginning.
I'll now open the public hearing. If you have a comment or would like to make a statement, per the rules of the council, you'll have four minutes. Please go to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we'll be glad to hear your comments.
My name is Sherry Cook. I live at 708 Shoemaker Lane here in Salisbury, and I'm not sure exactly what I can oppose or not oppose, but I just wanted to state that several of our neighbors along the street are very concerned about the 42 homes that are going into a little over a 12-acre plot and the amount of traffic that's going to be on Shoemaker Lane. There's already a huge amount of traffic now because of the developments that are around the corner, and now that we understand there's going to be a development over where the old mall is, you have, there's no sidewalks, you have Glen Avenue School, you have Parkside School, and you have a lot of kids who are on the street, walking up and down, going to school, back, back and forth. And I understand that there's been no traffic study on anything, because you're going to, essentially, if there's going to be 42 homes, everybody has at least two cars, so you're going to have more than 80 new cars on this tiny little street that runs from North Park to Glen Avenue. So that is our concern, and I don't know if there's some sort of study that can be done. I don't know if there is a feasibility that maybe there could be an entrance into the development from Beagland, but not an exit, which would, might alleviate some of the traffic. I'm not sure exactly where we would go from that, but there are quite a few, there are, these are the biggest concern. I mean, this has been a quiet, I've lived there since 1989. It's been a quiet little street, and the more development that has gone on around Stonegate and on around the corner, they come flying around that corner like it's a thruway to Glen Avenue. And now, we're going to have more traffic. So where's the safety in that? So that's all I have to say.
Would you like to comment on that?
I'm Keith, I am a member of Timbercrest SBY LLC. When we, my partner and I purchased the property approximately two and a half years ago, we did an evaluation of the underlying zoning district of the property, and the property is zoned 8A, which allows for single-family residential dwelling units without exception with a minimum lot area of 8,000 square feet. The maximum permitted density based on, based on the, the land area would be approximately 70 homes if we were to strictly adhere to the 8,000-square-foot lot size. We chose not to do that. We, we chose to develop at about 65% of the permitted density. The property in question was, that is, be the subject of the annexation this evening, was essentially, as I understand it, a residual parcel from when the Rufus Johnson estate was subdivided or distributed to the city of Salisbury many, many years ago. That residual parcel is being brought into the development to be contiguous with the city of Salisbury property. When, in so bringing the orphaned parcel into the property, we're asking that it be also zoned R8A. So I do understand the, the concerns of the, of the homeowners, but I would suggest that there might be a traffic management issue related to the development that is east of the, our, of our property. As a matter of fact, I lived in Stonegate for a while, so I can attest that there are hundreds and hundreds of dwelling units in that area, but I would suggest that the 41, it's 41 home sites that we'll be developing in Timbercrest will not be the contributing factor to that. We have obtained preliminary site plan approval from the Planning Commission, and in our preliminary discussion, they actually requested that we add a second entrance to the overall master plan. Our initial study was to only have a single entrance, and it was the concern of the fire department, the public safety officials, that a second entrance would be desirable. We came to understand that that was probably a wise decision. We came to understand that that was probably a wise decision internally and frankly externally, because with the two entrances and two exits leaving the property, that will diffuse the traffic that is coming out of the development. So with all due respect to the, the concerned citizens, I would submit that the annexation is simply to allow this parcel to be brought into the overall parcel, which is currently zoned 8A, and we have asked for no exceptions, no increased density. We've asked for no, no extraordinary approvals. We are simply attempting to develop the property in a manner consistent with the underlying zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the council?
Okay. No, go ahead. Yes. Now, that corner plot there, is that going to be a buffer or is that going to be a home on that, you know, there's a, I think there's a section, you'd like a little bit of a wooded buffer at all? Is that part of that?
I go back up there?
Yeah, if you want, I'm sorry, I should have clicked earlier on that. Because it's kind of an odd shape.
I'm sorry?
It's an odd-shaped little section that's coming in, I think, on the corner there.
So are you talking about the intersection of North Park Drive and Beaglin?
Yes.
That, that corner?
Yeah.
That, that is adjacent to Shoemaker Pond, essentially?
Yes, yes.
That is undeveloped. That's going to be left in, in trees and also stormwater management, aka buyer retention.
Right, okay.
So that is under, that, that, that corner parcel is, is undeveloped.
Will be left kind of like that natural?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Jim?
Did, Keith, I'm going to ask you this question in the hopes that maybe it becomes clear. You did fewer homes on the property than you were allowed to.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Now, in, I've said this before in that room, I don't make it right, but I do appreciate that you didn't... The average size of the house?
The target size is going to be between 1,800 and 2,000 square feet, probably with a maximum of about 2,400.
Do you have any idea where your price range is going to fall?
I don't know that that's germane to this evening's discussion.
It is if you take, if you go from 40,000 feet up and look at the schools and the police and the infrastructure and the traffic light and getting out on it, that is, we don't do that in this county. But believe me when I tell you, you don't build anywhere else in this state without putting in a whole new road and all-new lights and all-new, we don't do that here. And you go to the Planning Commission first and then you come here. But I just, I'm trying to get an idea of, it is Glen Avenue School, that if they are elementary school students, that they will flow into, correct?
I would assume yes.
Okay. Has there, has anyone asked you, because I'm not, I don't want to say you didn't do it, has anybody asked you to give an estimate anywhere in your travels with this property of how many students they think will affect the school system?
No.
Okay. That is not your fault, but it is a huge mistake on the part of this community that we don't do that. Because if you look at Glen Avenue now, Glen Avenue is already overcrowded.
Mm-hmm.
This is one of those things where, I guess if, if there were time, traffic, did we, much like up on Daggsborough Road up there, did anyone get an idea of how many trips per day come out to the light, how many?
Based on the site, the Planning Commission did not ask for traffic study based on the size.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other comments, I'll close the public hearing at this time. And...
I'm not sure...
Excuse me, you're going to have to go back up.
I'm not real clear on, because there's two entrances into development, how that alleviates the traffic that Mr. Irtin was trying to say. I mean, I understand, I was at the meeting where they, the, the fire representative was here and they wanted extra entrance put in because the fire engine is going in and trying to get out. But he just said that the extra thing was put, the extra entrance was put in and that that would alleviate some of the traffic. I'm not sure how that alleviates the traffic. You still have cars going in and cars going out. So that, that's my question. I don't understand how that statement alleviates that.
Okay. Would you like to comment? Yeah.
The, the, the second entrance will, will help, will serve to diffuse the traffic as opposed to having excessive queuing, you know, at a single entrance, either incoming or outgoing. The two entrances afford the opportunity to fuse the traffic across two entrances. And again, I would, I would submit that of the probably, probably between 500 and 1,000 rooftops that are east of this parcel, our, our traffic, the additional traffic from our development will be virtually de minimis. So, and again, I will, I'll just reinforce that we are developing the property in accordance with the R-8A zoning district, which is an entitlement that runs with the property.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I will now call the vote, please. I close the meeting, yeah. Let's close the meeting. Close the hearing. The hearing, sorry. Close the hearing. Yeah, I don't want to close the meeting yet. And I'll call the vote on resolution number 2974. All those in favor of resolution number 2974, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye.
Mr. President, is it okay if I abstain on this one, please? I didn't vote either way, I apologize.
Oh, sure. And you're recent for the abstention. Okay. Is that okay? Mark, he's, it's all right. Okay. We'll note that the vote is for zero and one abstention. Just to make it clear, is there anyone who wants to speak on resolution number 2975? You're already sworn in, so you're okay. Okay, right, all right. All right, I'll call for a motion to approve resolution number 2975. Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Glantz, will you please read resolution number 2975?
Resolution number 2975, a resolution of the City of Salisbury to adopt an annexation plan for certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the southerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Timbercrest SBY LLC Shoemaker Lane Annexation, beginning for the same at a point on the westerly side of Shoemaker Lane near the northeasterly corner of Lot 1 of the lands of Timbercrest SBY LLC being part of parcel 0034, Lot 1, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property in rectangular shape to the point of beginning.
All right, I'll open the public hearing on this section for resolution number 2975. Okay, hearing, there's no one who wishes to speak. I'll close the public hearing at this time, and I'll call for the vote on resolution number 2975. All those in favor of resolution number 2975, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're going to abstain, Mr. Irtin? Mr. Irtin abstains. Chair votes aye. Vote is four, zero, one abstention. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2566 for the first reading.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake. Mr. Tillman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2020 Fire Department budget to transfer insurance funds received by the city, or received by the city for the Fire Department operating budget from the general fund for revenue received for repairs to ambulance A2, whereas damage was done to ambulance A2 during legitimate City of Salisbury Fire Department duties, and whereas the Fire Department paid for the repairs to ambulance A2 out of the FY 2020 Fire Department operating budget, whereas the city has received insurance proceeds from the local government insurance trust in the amount of $4,827.79 for the repairs to ambulance A2, and whereas the insurance proceeds are to be used to replenish the Fire Department operating budget to bring it back in line with planned 2020 budget expense projections for the remainder of the fiscal year, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2020 budget be amended as follows with an increase in the general fund revenue insurance proceeds account of $4,827.79 and an increase in the Fire Department expense vehicles account by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2566 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2567 for the first reading. So moved?
Second.
Mr. Irtin, Mr. Boda, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2020 Fire Department budget to transfer funds from the city general fund to the Fire Department operating budget to cover expenses for vehicle maintenance, whereas the city has declared a 1999 Ford Crown Victoria and a 2005 Chevrolet Suburban as surplus, and the vehicles have been sold at auction, and whereas both vehicles were operated by the Salisbury Fire Department, and whereas the city has received a total of $5,226.25 proceeds generated from the auction sale and placed the funds in the city's general fund, and whereas the Fire Department has use for the funds received and requests that the funds of $5,226.25 be reallocated to the Fire Department operating budget for 2020, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2020 budget be and is hereby amended as follows, increase in the general fund revenue, sale of assets proceeds account by $5,226.25, and an increase in the Fire Department's expense vehicle account by the, an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2567 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2568 for the first reading. So moved?
Second.
Mr. Irtin, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the city approving an amendment of the FY 2020 general fund budget to appropriate funds needed to administer an election in District 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 in the event of a resulting tie in the November 5, 2019 general election, or city election. Whereas the November 5, 2019 City of Salisbury election may result in a tie for the winner in one or more election districts, and whereas in the, in that event, the city must fund a special election to determine a single winner of these districts, and whereas the city's FY 2020 budget does not contain an appropriation sufficient to cover the expense of conducting the additional election, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year 2020 general fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows, increase current surplus available by 53,000, increase the elections account by 53,000.
Questions or comments? Just for everybody's...
We know he's not going to tie anybody.
Just if the, the funds will not, obviously not be expended, because if there's no tie. So we won't have any, hopefully we won't have any issues, but just in case. If there's no other comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2568 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2569 for the first reading. So moved?
Second.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, approving a budget amendment of the grant fund to appropriate funds from the Community Needs Grant from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore Inc., awarded for the City of Salisbury Youth Civics Council, whereas the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore has a Community Needs Grant, and whereas the purpose of the Community Needs Grant is to provide support to a broad range of charitable programs, and whereas youth empowerment mobilization is identified as a critical component in the future of the City of Salisbury, and whereas the mission of the City of Salisbury's Youth Civics Council is to mobilize and empower the youth of our community by providing meaningful opportunities to engage in civic leadership and service, and whereas CFEs has awarded a Community Needs Grant to the City of Salisbury, which provides funding in the amount of $3,512 for the City of Salisbury's Youth Civics Council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits of the council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, that the city's grant fund budget be amended as follows, increase in the FY, is this correct? FY 19? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
In the FY 19 Community Needs Grant revenue account by $3,512, and increase in the FY 19 CFEs Community Needs Grant expense account by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments?
None.
We are in 2020.
2020.
We're in 19...
It's FY 20, though.
Yes.
It should be FY 20.
Yeah.
Okay, so it should be, all right. So then it's increase the FY 20...
We'll change that in the second reading.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2569 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2562.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend sections 15.04.010, 15.04.020, and 15.04.030 of Chapter 15.04 Building Code by adopting updated standard codes in Section 15.04.010, amending the amendments to the International Building Code in Section 15.04.020, and amending amendments to the International Plumbing Code 2018 in Section 15.04.030, and to amend Section 15.24.040 of Chapter 15.24 Housing Standards to adopt the updated standard codes. This is the second time we've gone through this, but primarily what we're doing is basically changing it from the older 2015 to the 2018 updated codes and adding the International Green Construction Code to the requirements.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2562 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2563. So moved?
Second.
Mr. Irtin, Mr. Boda, Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's capital project fund budget and the 2020 general fund budget to appropriate funds for community centers, whereas ordinance 2394 authorized the city to sell bonds in FY 17, which appropriated funds for various capital projects, and whereas the FY 17 bond includes funding for community centers, and whereas the city has contracted for the construction of the renovations of the Newton Street Community Center, and the costs of the renovations will exceed the allocated budget, whereas the city desires to purchase the Truitt Street Community Center, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's capital project budget be and is hereby amended as follows. And then the chart below indicates that money, where the money is coming from and where the money will be spent in those accounts that will be, come from and transferred to. And be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year 2020 general fund budget be amended as follows, increase in the current year surplus of 150,000, and increase in transferred general capital projects by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments?
Just one comment, just for, to correct some things that were said last week, the Truitt Street Community Center is open and operational, so there is active programming in that community center.
Thank you, Mr. Boda, for pointing that out. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2563 for the second reading, please signify... All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2563 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2564 for the second reading.
Some moved?
Ms. Jackson?
Second.
Mr. Irtin?
Yep.
Mr. Tillman.
Thank you. It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 20 general fund budget to accept and appropriate the funds received from the Heron Agility Group, Furry Friends Pet Services, and Ms. Allison Niles in memory of her mother, Mrs. Joan Clark, for the purchase of canine bulletproof vests. This is, I mean, this is the second reading for this. Do you want me to go through all the details of the need meter?
No, I think just the...
Sorry. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury that funds of up to $3,000 be accepted from the Heron Agility Group, the Furry Friends Pet Services, and Mrs. Allison Niles in memory of her mother, Mrs. Joan Clark, and be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2020 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows, increase the general fund revenue by 3,000, and increase the police department budget by 3,000.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2564 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye. I would also like to thank Mrs. Jest, Mrs. Delisle, Allison Niles, and the Heron Agency, Heron Agility Group for their donations. Our canines are officers just like everybody else, and we're glad that we now have protection for those important canines.
It's fabulous.
At this time, I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2565 for the second reading. Some moved?
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Tillman.
Yes, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 20 budget to appropriate funds for street resurfacing and concrete repair, whereas the City of Salisbury Department of Infrastructure Development has completed paving and concrete repairs throughout the city that are eligible for reimbursement from the state, and whereas the city has received a reimbursement from the MDOT SHA in the amount of $101,178.62, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development seeks to reimburse the operating account from which the original appropriation was budgeted in order to continue the citywide paving and concrete programs, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2020 budget is hereby amended as follows, increase the MDOT reimbursement account by $101,178.62, increase the citywide street maintenance account by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2565 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Any public comments?
Yes, sir.
One reminder, next Tuesday, November 5, is Election Day. Please exercise your vote. It is important to let your voice be heard, and we encourage everybody to do so. Any other?
I'd just like to say thank you.
Go right ahead.
I have the 12th and the 18th as the next few meetings, correct?
Correct.
Of the legislative session and then the reorganization.
Correct.
I promise I will be better prepared.
Now, that's okay. The, the reason that we did it tonight is because the mayor will not be with us on the 18th.
Ah.
And he asked, and I said, absolutely.
Right.
So that's the reason we would have done it. It was scheduled for the 18th.
I totally would have dressed that way.
Well, that's why, to be honest, that's, I like it better this way, because then we catch you unaware and you're not prepared.
Thank you again, sir.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.